We do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News, The Times, and Trentonian on January 6, 2021. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon FiOS. The Board preserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being videotaped for the purpose of Board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on Comcast Channel 19, Verizon FiOS Channel 32, and the school district website www.hvrsd.org. Would you please join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to request a motion that the Board approve the minutes from the following meetings, our special and closed meetings on May 3, 2021, the minutes of the May 17 regular meeting, as well as the minutes of the May 24 special meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. I will provide a report for this evening, and then we will get going. As we near the end of another school year, I'd like to take a moment to recognize our students and their families for a job well done. Parents, thanks for rising to the occasion to support your students amidst the many challenges that have confronted you over the course of these past 15 months. With your assistance, your students have worked to do their very best through challenging circumstances, and you have supported them along the way. Working together, we've made it to year's end. Congratulations to the class of 2021. While this was a different type of year in which to graduate, the Board applauds you for your efforts and wishes you great success in your future endeavors. We also recognize especially the 5th and 8th grade classes as they prepare to move on to new chapters in their lives. Please know that the Board will continue to support the district administration and staff as they assist you with your transitions to the next level. The Board is committed to supporting student achievement and social emotional health and well-being of all students. I would like to offer the Board's thanks to district administration, faculty, and staff for all that they have done to support our students throughout this year. We continue to applaud your creativity, your resilience, and dedication to your students, to each other, to maintaining our facilities, and to keeping them safe and clean, and in so many other ways. The Board is also firmly committed to district efforts to support your health and future success. The Board will work closely with the administration throughout the summer months to make arrangements for the upcoming school year. What stands out to me as we end this school year during a pandemic is not the things that we missed or did without, but all that was made possible and all that we have accomplished working together. So many things did get accomplished and were able to happen, such as our end-of-year time-honored traditions to include a beautiful graduation ceremony, complete with perfect weather. Pandemic or not, so many efforts went forward, such as our district and community efforts towards achieving equity. And one example of that, one great example, was through the formation of our District Equity Council. Through efforts to support student and staff wellness, such as through the expansion of the Nurtured Heart approach. Continued focus on the district's goal of student content mastery, as evidenced through our continuation of Board policy and regulation on grading practices and revised homework policies, and looking at school day scheduling changes. District safety, security, and communication initiatives, with the review and revision of the district website as a very recent example. Sustainability and green school efforts, and this year we were able to successfully host the first ever Green Week in April, with over 20 activities for community members to participate in. And through budget planning and facilities maintenance initiatives, and other new practices were put into place in that regard, such as the institution of quarterly reports from our business administrator to our finance committee. Thanks to the individual and collaborative efforts of our district leadership team and key administrators, our educators, paraprofessionals, nurses, custodians, counselors, bus drivers, administrative staff, IT staff, staff for the athletic department, music and art departments, clubs, and all extracurricular activities, our fantastic tech staff, food service staff, and others, the students of our district were able to be in school for more days than was the case for many others in our county. We also thank many of these same folks and commend them for supporting our remote learners, who with the support of their families did great work under challenging circumstances. The Board is very proud of all district students, and we wish you and your families the best for a safe, happy, and relaxing summer. Also, thanks to our community partners, such as the Y, for their efforts to support our students and their families through this year. To the leadership and staff of our local municipalities, who worked with us during the pandemic to offer vaccine clinics, to partner on the mobile food pantry, and to seek and identify ways to be fiscally responsible. To the HVEF for their ongoing efforts to support staff and student innovation and achievement, and others. Collectively, we still have much to do. Individually, one of the best ways to affect change within your community is to become involved. There are many ways to do this. One such significant way is to run for elected office, and as I mentioned at last month's meeting, this year's annual school election will take place on November 2. Two three-year terms will be on the slate for Hopewell Township and one three-year term for Pennington Borough. The deadline for filing nomination petitions to run for positions on the Board of Education is 4:00 p.m. Monday, July 26. Nominating petitions are available for pickup at the business office of the school district or through the office of the Mercer County Clerk, and feel free to reach out to any of us with questions. One quick note, thanks on the superintendent search, thanks to our superintendent search committee and the Board for all that they have done to date. We continue to work diligently and continue to plow our way through Phase 3 of our effort, and we're hoping to send out another update to the community this week. And then finally, I just wanted to note that we are back to our in-person Board meetings, which is a great thing. And since the Board has returned to these standard in-person meetings, this will be the final meeting of the Board held via Zoom unless or until such time that circumstances surrounding the virus or some other emergency should affect our ability to hold in-person meetings. Therefore, we will be reverting back to our regular format, and we'll only be able to accept public comment in person during future meetings of the Board. Special thanks again to our tech staff, who have done amazing work to keep us up and running during this time. We really appreciate your efforts. And with that, I will pass off to Dr. Smith for his report.
Well, Deb, that was great. Thank you. We've done a lot this year. Really, thanks to the Board for all their support. I mean, we met weekly, if you think back to last summer, and your guidance and support through all of this craziness is really appreciated. I think we've done good work together, and we really, I think, benefited our students and staff in the long run. And I think very few people, if any, would look back on the year and say that we didn't, we weren't leading the pack in terms of what we were doing and how we were doing it. So again, I thank the Board for their support and guidance. Now, you talked about this past school year. I'm going to give us a snapshot into the future. So I'm going to share our screen. We'll talk a little bit about our next steps. We're going to talk about reopening in September, our plans. Now, you all remember our previous meetings regarding this? There's lots of caveats around this. A lot of things can happen. But as you mentioned, Deb, we really had a nice end to the school year, and we're looking forward to getting back to a traditional return to school. The first thing I want to say, is echo your comments, Deb, that we did it collectively, with everyone involved. We were able to finish out our school year. We had a number of end-of-the-year traditional events, and I think it really worked out well. Attended a number of end-of-the-year events, and just the smiles on the kids' faces, and the number of folks who came up after graduation just so appreciative of where we got to. It was really very nice. And as you mentioned, the weather for the Timberlane Moving On Ceremony on Day 2, couldn't have been better. And the graduation ceremony was perfect. All right, let's start, continue with Deb's thank yous. I want to give a shout-out to our students and staff, our families. I think I've outlined all of our staff members. I apologize if I left everyone out. Three people looked over this, so I think we're good. Our administration, building level and supervisory level, they worked nonstop. We met basically from last spring break up until this spring break, more than once a week, just planning out our return to school and next steps. So couldn't be more proud of our administrative team for what we've accomplished. Food services, and I'll give you some fun facts in a second, but they delivered food to our students all school year. Our nurses and health folks, again, they helped us in those times when we were faced with challenges. They gave us guidance, and it was really helpful. On those days we closed, there were people who were in this building cleaning, making sure our students and staff were safe. That's our custodial and maintenance staff. A big thank you and shout-out to them for their efforts on keeping us all safe. And of course, last but not least, our technology department and our transportation departments, we could not have done it without them. And some quick fun facts, our help desk answered 15,000 support tickets over the school year. Our transportation department, along with food service, delivered 6,000 lunches to our families on free and reduced lunch. Who personally delivered hundreds of computers, even on weekends, to students' front doorsteps, both transportation and technology. We have 7,000 district devices that needed to be set up and repaired. Technology is responsible for that. Transportation, you may not know this, but on any given day, they're transporting over 3,000 students, and our numbers picked up at the end of the school year. We have 563 desk phones, 45 copiers, 289 projectors, plus a security system that needed to be up and functioning, no matter whether we were hybrid or remote, and our technology department really made it work. And when we talk about something, and Deb, you had mentioned the food pantry, we really worked hard to support our neediest members of our community, and our transportation folks really stepped up and helped us deliver those meals. At last count, we had over 50,000 Zoom meetings in our district. I know many of your Board members probably feel like you were on 20,000 of those, but if you look at all of our classes throughout the days, really an amazing accomplishment that we had very few issues. And again, huge shout-out to our technology folks. And their work doesn't end. We'll be delivering lunches throughout the summer, setting up student laptops. So again, to those groups and to everyone involved, really, just a heartfelt thank you from me. There were some dark times that we all went through, but there's definitely light at the end of the tunnel, and I can't thank everyone enough for their support. Here are final COVID numbers, for those of you who are following along. That's where we landed. It's up on our district website. And as we look to the future, you know, I think this seemed to resonate with folks last summer, so we're continuing with our pledge, but we're planning for a traditional start to the school year. And we're also planning for a potential of whether we need to do a short-term closure, either in a classroom or school, if we have additional cases. But for us, I think folks know this, but just reminding you that there's going to be some students in our district who have not been in school for 18 months, not been in a physical school. So that's going to be a challenge for them. So we want to make sure the beginning of school is a welcoming one, particularly for that group, but really for everybody. Dr. Therese has been working diligently on identifying and supporting our academic gaps in student learning. Our cleaning protocols will continue. Our classroom air filters will remain. We will continue to follow social distancing and PPE guidelines as determined by the state. You know, obviously, things have relaxed. We are mask optional if you have your vaccine at this point, but things can change, and we are working regularly with our school physician, the Department of Health in Hopewell, and also in Montgomery. Where can you find information? On our new website. Check out our new website that we have upgraded to make it easier to use. Thanks for the Community Relations Committee for their feedback and really their guidance when we first returned to school. Took us a little while to totally revamp it, but here we are, and there's a whole dropdown menu there for your COVID-19 information and return-to-school planning. So in addition to sending those updates, there'll be a repository for all your updates. You might remember this, where we were through our phases. I'm happy to report that we have achieved Phase 4, and we will begin the school year in Phase 4, full capacity in person. So we're happy to get there. Things you know, some key dates, these are all subject to change, but we'll send updates as necessary throughout the summer. We're going to have open houses. Each building will have an open house on the middle school and the elementaries, the high school. They're doing their regular ninth-grade orientations, but we're also going to have some dedicated open houses. The principals will reach out to their families if kids want to come in, just wander around the school, get re-acclimated. Schedules, here's the date, will be released on August 26, all schools, all levels. So just mark your calendars now. That's when the teacher placements will go out on the elementary, the team and teacher placement, and homeroom placements on the middle school, and student schedules will be rolled out. It's August 26. This will be shared throughout the summer, but I just wanted to give you some planning. Wellness, and you've seen many of these before, but just wanted to highlight a couple that we were adding through our ESER funds, a licensed mental health clinician to support our students, K-12, that'll be taking place. We'll continue to collaborate with Comprehensive Mental Health. Our employee support program will be here, and we will follow our state guidance regarding masking and PPE. But that's all, you know, we'll come, we're expecting an update from the state in the next couple of weeks to provide guidance, but we will be there to support our students and staff as they come back, not only mentally, but also academically. Again, a nod to Dr. Therese, identifying any curriculum gaps that might have occurred due to the hybrid nature, but ensuring that we're using technology when appropriate for students to help fill those gaps. Students will be assessed in September again, and additional supports will be provided as needed. Summer programs, you've heard about that. Dr. Therese and Paulette Donardo held the summer program update, which you can find online, the video. But that'll begin, it's going to be July before you know it. And something I think everyone should be aware of, home instruction. As you know, everyone is expected to be back in person in September. We will only be providing home instruction for students with a documented medical need that prevents them from returning to in-person learning. More guidance will be shared as we go forward, but I just want to make that clear. At this point, the guidance we're getting from the state is we were returning to in-person As I mentioned before, this is kind of just a repeat, but we really want to make sure that everybody is comfortable as they return. Open houses at each school, students and parents can drop in, doing some team building, not only on the middle school level, but really those first couple of weeks, I think we got a lot of positives for making sure everybody felt comfortable as they returned to school. And then the assessments start, benchmarking, and our placement tests will begin in September. Our technology, have I thanked our technology department enough? I don't think so. They will be working this summer to ensure that every student has a working device. This will be posted on our website, but if you needed help or something repaired, use the forum. Summer is the perfect time to get your device repaired, and our technology is waiting to help you. And transportation is going to return to all of our traditional bus routes. We're going to send out a survey in late August just to confirm, make sure everybody's coming back with us, but we are rolling as we're rolling normally. Something, you know, inevitably comes up, what happens if a student is suspected exposure, exhibits or symptoms? I think our nurses, again, did a phenomenal job, as well as our administrators. But one thing I think folks need to understand, the state was previously very flexible in terms of if we quarantined an entire classroom, they could all transition to remote learning, and education was seamless. Right now, and I think the guidance is a little premature, but the guidance that we've been provided is that if you go remote, those days aren't counting. Again, I think there's some things to change with that, but that would really impact us potentially if we needed to quarantine an entire class. I'm hoping that'll change in the coming weeks, but as of right now, even for days that are bad weather days, for us to transition, now, remember, we go 182 days, so we still have e-learning for two days, but if we dip into the 180 days with snow, and right now, the guidance from the state is you have to have three days of an emergency, a declared emergency, and on the fourth day, you can then go remote learning. Did I articulate that correctly, Mr. Colavita?
We did.
Mr. Colavita knows, because he's the president of the New Jersey State Association of Business Administrators, and he's in the know. So transitioning, just want to give the Board a brief update to, you've heard it called ESER, it's the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. You've seen it and kind of heard the acronym, but this was funding, the federal funding that provides direct relief to schools to assist in safely reopening schools and giving us additional funds to provide supports to our students. So it started last March, in March of 2020, with ESER 1. That was the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Securities Act, the CARES Act. And then ESER 2 was just assigned into law last December, and Mr. Colavita, we just got that application, is that correct? Or we just...
Yeah, ESER 2 has been submitted and still waiting for our final approval, and ESER 3, we just received, and we're going through the initial application process. There's the first piece of it is due the 24th, and then the remainder of the application is due in November.
So there is monies, and I will say, we don't get the level of monies as some of our neighboring districts. However, we're very appreciative to everything we get. The amount of monies is tied to our student, number of our students on free and reduced lunch. However, to give you some breakdown, we put together this chart of the monies that we received and how we are planning to use them at this time. So ESER 1, those monies have been accounted, they really helped fund the additional air filtration devices in each classroom and our ordering of personal protective equipment. I want to give a shout-out to Mr. Colavita and Tom Quinn at this point. We were really smart in terms of our timing of our ordering. Tom Quinn just had a gut feeling and ordered, I think it was 40 sheets of Plexiglas at that time. We ordered masks, N95 masks, gloves, a number of wipes. We got a stockpile of those early on that really enabled us to open. So that was just fortuitous timing for all of us, but we used those ESER monies for that. ESER 2 monies, we are due $346,000. We are going to earmark that for mental health supports, some learning loss supports, all of our summer programming will be paid through this, and some HVAC assessments enhancements. Sorry. HVAC enhancements in some of our schools. With our systems running continuously and really putting and pumping in as much outside air as we have, we've seen some issues with some of them, not a health issue, but really more of an efficiency issue that we're trying to rectify in some of our schools. ESER 3, which as Bob just said, the application, you might have seen this in the paper, which I think our amounts was, in the paper was much higher than our actual amounts, but any amount is appreciated, but we will be receiving $621,000 for that. That'll also be earmarked towards mental health supports, learning loss supports, and HVAC enhancements, and that will go through till next year.
I think it's two years.
Next two years.
So Tom, what we're hoping to do is, we're hoping to analyze what happens, what's going to happen in July and August with our learning loss supports that Dr. Therese is working on for the summer, and also the implementation of the mental health supports that Ms. Donardo is working on. Once we see how that goes, we'll be able to reanalyze or reevaluate how we want to use ESER 3. And it will also give us additional time to evaluate the HVAC enhancements that we, that our engineers are working on right now, to see how much or how little of that money we need. Once we get to that point where the application is submitted, we can reallocate the money or reprioritize some of that money, and we'll do that through our committee process, you know, Ed Program Committee and Finance and Facilities Committee to go forward. It's nice that we do have time to make a decision on ESER 3. It's not a knee-jerk reaction just to get the money in.
Got it. And just for those of you who are following along, there's specific guidelines for these federal grants, they can't supplant...
No, they can.
Oh, they can supplant, okay.
They can. We're not being held to a maintenance of effort with this money as we would be with the title, the title grants.
Okay. But the good news, I mean, the other side is, it's tied, they give a specific guidance of where the monies can be spent.
Correct.
And percentage-wise.
Correct.
So basically, it says X percent has to be...
Correct.
...provided student mental health. Okay. So it's kind of just a breakdown of our ESER monies and what we're planning to do with them. If you have any questions or feedback regarding our return-to-school plans or ESER funds, you can use, this is the email that we set up last year in terms of all of our questions, it's hvrsd2020. We'll probably update that for September of 2021, but just feel free to reach out. You can always call my office or call Mr. Colavita's office, or call Dr. Therese's office with any questions regarding this. But again, we're fortunate for the monies we receive, and we're putting them right into the schools and the classrooms to make sure that we're providing the safest environment possible for our students and staff. And that brings me to the end of my return-to-school update.
Thank you very much, Dr. Smith. Do any Board members have questions for Dr. Smith on his very informative presentations?
That's it now, I don't think, I think people are COVID out. Done. All right.
For sure. Well, thank you very much. So we will move forward to items on our consent agenda that are marked with the asterisk. I will request a motion that the consent agenda items be accepted.
Oh, I just had one that I'd like to remove for further discussion. Okay, and that would be I-8?
I-8.
That was on the Capital Reserve Department.
Yes, yes, I'm seeing that now. Okay. We can accept and then address that item?
We'll go back when we go through, yeah, yeah.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the items on consent?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. Okay. And now, for the description?
Uh, yeah.
Yes. Mr. Sewicki.
Can we do that one now?
I, um, or should we do it now, or should we wait until we get down to finance and facilities?
No, let's do, we'll do public comment, and then we'll go through it.
Okay, all right. We will move to public comment first. Members of the public are invited to address the Board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. When using a virtual format such as Zoom, individuals who would like to make a comment are asked to use the hand raise function to alert the Board President of your intent to speak. The Board Secretary will activate your ability to speak by unmuting you. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board... In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by district administration. We also have the Google form available for anyone who would like to offer written comment. Again, you're asked to share your name, address, and municipality, and your written comments will be read for up to three minutes. Only one written comment per public comment session per participant. Public comment is now open. I am currently not seeing any written responses in the Google Doc, written public comment, and I'm also not seeing any hands raised. We'll give it a few seconds. And we have nobody here in, no one here in person right now, so I think it is going once, going twice, and we will close public comment. All righty. We will move to our, I do not believe we have any items of old business. I addressed the board elections in my comments, so we will move on to Finance and Facilities, and Mr. Sawicki.
Great. Okay, can I have a motion to move the items on the agenda for Finance and Facilities, please?
As well as the other one, because that wasn't under Finance. Oh, yes, it was.
It was, yep.
Yep, yep, yep. Got it.
Second.
Wednesday, talked about a number of items. You saw, we have a number, we wound up approving under consent, a large number of annual resolutions that we typically handle. We also spoke about our ongoing facilities projects. We were starting this week discussions on the paving, and that work should start soon. That will be at Stony Brook and Hopewell Elementary. We also talked about some other ongoing facilities work. One thing, just to inform people, over by the PAC, I don't know if you've gone up the access ramp or the landing there, but they're in, they're in rough shape, so that work is going to be done, and we're going to mitigate the issue that has resulted in that situation as well, so that's a good thing. With regard to I-8, just before we voted on it, and this has been something I brought up the last couple of years, just, just to make it clear that what we're authorizing today is a max amount that we could potentially deposit in Capital Reserve. When we met last Wednesday, basically, we had, I think, a very good discussion about, you know, what could potentially be done with the surplus we ran this year, right? We were trying to understand what happens if it's left into legal reserve, what can you use it on versus Capital Reserve, what can you use it on? So if anything, I think we were all in agreement that we need to see where we come out with regard to our audit and, you know, what may change over the summer with regard to, you know, anything that comes out as we prepare to get back to school, things of that nature. But at this time, it certainly made sense that if we chose to deposit it all in Capital Reserve, have the ability to do that. So just to clarify that that was, that's what we're voting on here, just the, we're not authorizing the transfer. We do that after the, our annual audit. Beyond that, the only other thing I'd like to point out, we have an acceptance of a donation from Ed Gainsbourg of a trumpet and trombone to the music department. So, you know, at this point, then, just, we have those two items to vote on.
Just wanted to make a comment and thank Ed. Ed was a board member when I first got on the board and really kind of bring, helped bring me along when I was an assistant BA at the start, and Ed wanted to spend some time, we probably spent an hour and a half just kind of reminiscing about the time when he was on the board, and he was part of the board that actually built Stony Brook. And he was real, a real aficionado of the arts, and he just wanted to donate those instruments. He also donated a pretty nice picture of the Class of 1940s Trip to the Capitol, which his father was a part of, and we had that hanging on the wall. So again, wanted to thank Ed, really, really good board member, years passed.
No, no, that's great, thank you. Thanks for sharing that, Bob. Okay, so I think, I think that's what we have.
Yes, all in favor of accepting the finance report?
Aye.
Any opposed, I'm sorry, any opposed or abstaining? The motion carries.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to, I just wanted to make a comment. We had talked at the, at the finance meeting, and so the people on the finance committee are all kind of aware of what led to, how we got to $3.8 million surplus, but I just thought it might be instructive for the rest of the board to, to understand a little bit about how we got there. And I know, I think the last we talked about at an open board, a full board meeting, we were talking about somewhere in the neighborhood of two and a half million or a little bit more than that. So if you could, Bob, kind of give just a quick rundown of how, of how we got there. I mean, high level, you know, not, not the.
In front of me.
Oh, shoot, I'm sorry.
I can, actually.
I haven't worked down. We generated. The bottom line was, we generated additional surplus this year based upon a lot of the savings that we talked about during budget with COVID. There was a lot of savings in transportation, obviously, because we didn't run a lot of the things we normally would run. We had considerable savings in our special ed department because we had, didn't have students matriculate that we thought were going to matriculate, and then there were related services to some of those students that we did, also didn't have to use. We had some savings in, in our facilities budget due to energy savings, because again, we aren't running our facilities, you know, six in the morning till 11 at night as we might normally have, which also saves overtime hours and all that kind of stuff. So what it came down to was some money, additional monies left over at the end of the year, and my discussion with Finance and Facilities was, we should at least reserve, give us the right to do something other than have it roll to our legal reserve, and if we needed it, it could roll to our Capital Reserve when we make our final decision in November. As you might recall, we said that 2.5 million was around the number that we typically would try to put into our Capital Reserve. This is a unique situation. We do have some facilities issues that are bubbling up, and we just wanted to give ourselves some flexibility. If we don't need it for those capital projects, and we don't even need to use it in this year, but you could reserve it in Capital Reserve, and as I said to the committee, we could also use it to make a plan for paying down debt as we did this year over a sequential number of years. We don't have to use it all in one year, we could do some this year, some next year, some the year after that. It just gives us some additional flexibility to have a greater discussion at the conclusion of our audit.
Now, I, I don't have the exact numbers, but what I can say is, it definitely wasn't across the board saving, so it's not, it really wasn't just one, one area. You know, everybody ran really, really efficiently this year, so really, it's a, you know, something for the Finance Office to, as well as every other department to be proud of. I mean, you know, everyone was really careful about, you know, what was spent, and that was, what was spent was needed and used effectively. I will point out, every time we talk about it, Bob does recognize, Paulette, your, your department for this year, because really, you know, I think it, it really helped us in that regard, so we appreciate it.
Yeah, and you did make a good point there, that it was work that people did throughout. So I gave you the, the broad stroke, big numbers, but there were savings in every department. Everybody really thought about what we needed, and obviously, we weren't in school full-time, so we didn't need the full complement of supplies we might have needed. We didn't need all the, the, you know, extra services that we would use for chaperoning and things like that. So again, a lot of that would, this puts that in that pot, we can think about what we could do for the district going forward. We'll be keeping a keen eye on, on when we come back to full-time to see just how we run.
Yeah, because maybe, if anything, we also spoke about, you know, the economics of things seem to be changing post-COVID, you know, some good, some bad, so we have to look at that, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Herbert and Mr. Sawicki, and thank you, Bob. We will move on to Personnel and Ms. Grillo.
Can I have a motion to approve all the items on the Personnel Agenda? Thank you, thank you. Okay, so the Personnel Committee met tonight before the meeting. We talked about Personnel Appointments and ECA Appointments. We have 21 new hires that we are bringing onboard, and we have the retirement of Mary Lou Kennedy, who has been with the district for 22 years as part of her secretarial staff. We talked about how we are bringing back after-school enrichments, which is super exciting, and we have a number of extracurricular coach approvals, home instruction, kindergarten camp, et cetera, tonight. We also talked about job descriptions, so we talked about this the last meeting, last month, but there's an updated superintendent job description and an updated pre-K to five elementary subject area supervisor, so we're asking for your approval on all of those tonight. We also discussed a new organizational chart, so largely the same, not a ton of changes, just some small changes to structure to better support the district, but number of people stayed the same. We also discussed the employment contracts for Dr. Treese, Mr. Colavita, and Ms. Smith, so we talked about that at the last meeting as well, so I'm asking for your approval on that tonight. And then the last thing we talked about was the CJ Pride membership, so if you remember, we participated in a virtual career fair earlier this year with CJ Pride, which is the Central Jersey Program for the recruitment of diverse educators. That led to several interviews for some full-time roles this year, so we are going to continue our membership in that group. We found it to be really effective. And Mr. Colavita, can I have a roll call? Vote.
Yes. Ms., Ms. Driver.
Yes.
Ms. Grillo.
Yes.
Mr. Herbert.
Yes.
Ms. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Sawicki.
Yes.
Ms. Williams Galliano.
Yes.
And Ms. Lindthorst.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Grillo. Education Program Committee.
Hi, so everything we have is on consent tonight. We had two presentations today for Ed Common, it was relatively short for us. Vicky Palitzis gave us an update on STEM, focusing mostly on the STEM facilitators at the elementary schools, and we also had Jocelyn Muzi Chukwu, I don't know how you say her last name, I apologize, I know Vicky had problems with it too, so she's the Tollgate STEM Coordinator. And they really worked on supporting the staff and studying some benchmark developments, including assessments and building consistency across the grade levels. They worked to develop some new units and coached the teachers and have some professional development on some different instructions that line up with the curriculum. They all, well, Vicky presented on the three elementary schools other than Tollgate, and Jocelyn presented on Tollgate, and I would highly recommend looking at the slides because they had pictures of what the kids did and what each school did with their STEM units this year, so it's, it's pretty amazing what they're doing. And then going forward, she just mentioned a little bit about what the Class of 2023, and she said is 9% STEM pathways, 2024, only 4%, but then in 2025, which I think is our incoming freshman, is 20% on the STEM pathway, so it is going up, so that was great to see. And then Rosetta just gave us a quick update on the summer school for the general education students, where students, where teachers felt might need some support this summer, were invited to go to summer school, which I think Dr. Smith had talked about, summer school starting very soon in July. So there's not a large number of students attending, which is a good thing, and we'll have an update from Paulette about the special ed summer school going forward, so that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Long? Seeing none, we'll say thank you and move on to Community Relations, and Mr. Mason.
Yeah, how you doing? We met last Wednesday. We had, as the past couple of meetings, we've gone over the, Tom Stole My Thunder by showing it earlier, the redesigned website. Mr. Amundsen put in a lot of work on that, he's gone, and I really think it's a lot more user-friendly, and it's just the whole layout, I think it's a lot better, so if you get a chance, check it out. We briefly went over the end of the year survey results. It's still open till the 30th, so if you didn't do it yet, hop on there and do it. And early on, from what we've seen, a lot of positive feedback, which I think is good. We went over, we're going to be doing two, August and September for the Hopewell Express inserts. I think there's a lot, I think it'll be a good way, there's obviously going to be a lot with going back to school and a lot of changes going on in the district, so I think it'll be a good way to stay in touch with people over the summer, so be on the lookout for that. We'll obviously have more on that coming forward, but yeah, I think that's about it.
All right. Any questions for John? All right, thank you. Mr. Herbert, policy.
Yes, thank you. So this month, we kind of reviewed a, we reviewed a batch of new policies for first reading, so I'd like to request a motion for approval of the listed policies for first reading.
Motion.
Thank you. So the policies that are up for first reading, nothing too controversial or anything, so the first one is P3159, Teaching Staff Member School District Reporting Responsibilities. There was a change, so that, the major change to that one is that if a teaching staff member fails to report allegations of child abuse, the board needs to submit a report to the State Board of Examiners that outlines its findings. The second one is P and R8600, Student Transportation. The change, major change to that one is that new buses must have certain safety specifications, and also that every bus must display information allowing the public to report a bus driver's misconduct. The next one is also Policy and Regulation 5330.05, the Seizure Action Plan. This is actually a new policy and regulation for the care and treatment of students with a seizure disorder. Parents must submit the student's plan to the school nurse annually, and the school nurse then takes care of that.
Well, if I could jump in for one second, going back to transportation.
Please do.
Bob, do you want to just stress to everybody, so our buses are going to have stickers on them that say, give them a phone number to call, so if somebody sees one of our buses or one of our contracted buses not following the rules of the road, they will have a phone number that they can contact them.
Correct.
I just wanted that to be underscored.
Yep, thank you. Next one is Policy and Regulation 5460.02, Bridge Year Pilot Program. This is another new policy whereby students who graduate in 2021 or 2022 may return to the high school to take a combination of classes at the high school and the local county college. I believe that by the time this was set up, it was too late for 2021, and Tom, you indicated there was no interest this year, I believe, is that right?
Correct, for the bridge program, correct.
Right, okay. So they're still next year. Then we have Policy and Regulation 6471, School District Travel. The policy was rewritten to account for various code changes and a few options that were available to, number one, establish an annual maximum amount per employee for regular business travel, not requiring prior board approval. We selected that with an amount of $1,500, and number two, to exclude from prior approval travel that is in an existing employment contract.
And just so the board knows, that regular business travel does not, each month, you all approve professional development-type trips, that is not regular business travel. This is, these are for folks who have to travel from building to building, they have to go to the State House, they have to go to various meetings that the board doesn't need to approve up to a certain amount. Any of the travel trips and PD, you guys will still approve that.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Okay, so with that, I'd like to call for a voice vote.
I'm sorry, could I just ask one question? You actually asked, like, the part of the first question I was going to ask with regard to that bridge program, you know, in terms of the interest for this year. Is this, I guess it's something we have to make an allowance for going forward in the subsequent year? Like, you know, do we have a, you know, a mechanism or a, do we have any guidance in terms of what we're going to have to make assumptions for? Because, you know, it seems like there, at least for, are we responsible for the funds of the whole year, or is it just the fall semester where the student is at our schools?
So we're awaiting some specific guidance, but, because literally, they just changed the special ed guidance, is that last week? So we're, we're now responsible for students to age 23?
Three, yeah.
23. So the bridge program, we're expecting some more guidance, but it could go the entire year, we believe, so it'll be interesting to see how it plays out. Again, I think particularly the way we ended this year, I don't know too many kids who would be interested again in coming back and participating in sports or something like that, so we'll, but it would go through, so the mechanism is basically through guidance, the Guidance Department or Counseling Department, and conversations with the students who want to come back. Again, I don't know, in talking to Trip, in terms of the athletic portion of that, the level of interest of students coming back.
Okay. Might, the one thing I'd say then, it might be good as we go, as we move forward, just, Paulette, just understanding in your department, how many potential students we could have that would take advantage of it?
Yeah, that could be significant for her, I think we.
We have one, all right.
One already, and potentially 10 of who. One already, and potentially 10, who would, is that...
I would say, um, I...
For the following year.
Yeah.
And that, just to, again, not to belabor the point, but that means continuing an out-of-district placement for that, that 22nd to 23rd year, whereas, you know, in the past, we would, as students would age out, we would, that's just the, but, I mean, we have 10 students in top of the other districts, they have, you know, many, many more, so it's...
Any further comments on the policies for first reading? Okay, then I'd like to call for a voice vote to approve these policies for first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, the motion carries, thank you. I also now like to request a motion to approve the listed policies for a second reading and adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments on those policies from last month? Okay, Mr. Colavita, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Nah.
Ms. Grillo.
Yes.
Mr. Herbert.
Yes.
Ms. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Sewicki.
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Yes.
Ms. Lindthorst.
Yes.
And Ms. Driver.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, everybody. That is all for me.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. We will move on to our second public comment session. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. When using Zoom, you may use the hand raise function to alert us of your intent to speak. The board secretary will unmute you. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the board may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration, and the Google form is up as well, and I think we have one comment in there. Public comment is now open. I cannot see any hand raised at this point, so... Alright, we currently...
We do have one comment in the chat, so we can go to that one as we wait. And that comment is from Amy DiLorenzo of Yardley, Pennsylvania. RE graduation. Thank you to Ms. Riley, the custodial maintenance team, and anyone who helped with coordination of graduation, it was perfect. Very much appreciated by parents and students, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. DiLorenzo. It was a lovely evening. Absolutely. I concur. And we thank all of the staff for all of their efforts to make it a lovely evening for all of us.
How about the word "courage"? That was spectacular. Four minutes.
You're very kind. Any other comments? Any other hands raised?
Don't see anything else.
Okay, well, with that, public comment is now closed. Calendars for July.
Policy?
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, a motion to approve the calendars for June and July.
So, second.
All in favor?
No, we, no, now we gotta, now we talk about it.
Sorry, sorry. Discussion. July, policy, back to policy, since that one, we might need some consideration.
Meeting is...
19th.
19th. But, 14? Does it work? 14? 14? Give me a little time. Six, yeah.
Adam, I have the 12th for finance.
Yeah, that's good. Five?
Five o'clock. It's already on there? Yes, community relations.
Let's just communicate it with them.
Ma'am.
Bill? Is that six? Six o'clock?
I think we could. Let's check with our chair.
If we have the same nature to the 3:00 or 3:10 meeting, we can meet the earlier meeting as well.
Any day works, right? Especially for dumb ones, so whatever works for everyone else is good.
You want to do the 12th as well, before finance?
Finance is at five.
We should do 3:30, but I can do it. People would rather just four, go right in.
3:30 is the earliest I can do it. That's it.
We can do four. What works for...
Or the 13th, if that's easier? Split it up?
Either day is fine, just I can't go towards... 3:30. Are you ready?
3:30 or 12?
Okay.
Alrighty, thank you.
Personnel's going the 19th at 6:15?
That's great.
What'd she say? That's right.
Correct. And Education Committee would be on the 19th, and we'll do 10:30, so...
We told earlier to not to do it, but Rosetta had just emailed me something about an agenda item for the, I don't, is she on?
Oh, that's right.
Is she, I don't have her anymore.
Yeah, she's there. She's muted, though. Hold on, we got to get her on.
Yeah, that's right.
Do you have her, you have me about? Is it? Was that me or on there?
On the air. Can you hear me off? Yes. Okay, we said we're going to cancel, but I thought you were asking to add it back on, but I'm not, not on July. Okay, so we'll skip July, do August.
Alright.
So no EdCon.
No EdCon policy. Alright. All in favor of accepting the calendars for June, July?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries, thank you. So new business, just to mention that we will be discussing the superintendent's evaluation for 2021, as we are required to do by the state every year. We will, we will go through that process, and we will begin tonight during our executive session, and we'll have that report in when it is always due, by July 1st. Okay. I would like to request a motion to move into executive session to discuss the following items: special education settlement, harassment, intimidation, and bullying matters, the superintendent's search, employee number 6537, and, as I just mentioned, the superintendent's evaluation. No action will be taken.
Action may be taken.
Action may be taken. All in favor?
Motion.
I'm sorry.
Motion first.
I thought I did. Motion to enter into executive session, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries, thank you.